People on vacations.
Hey Kevin.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, November 30th. The agenda, we will have citizens input at seven o'clock. There is a public hearing at seven oh five to change the license type from restaurant wine and malt license to an all alcohol license at the Bangkok Cafe. At seven twenty, the Board of Selectmen will talk about the special town meeting warrant. And at seven fifty, we will do our goals and objectives and then action items. So Jim, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge and Legion. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens input. Did we want to do a little added item that's an emergency? That's why we're having it off of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll explain to the board. I'm just going to give a brief introduction and turn it over to Debbie and the Rec Commission. Because some nice things need to be said and they can't say nice things about themselves. So I'm going to say the nice things about them and then they're going to say nice things about other people. But we've got a couple of checks here and I won't steal their thunder because they're going to have some fun saying what it is. Combination of a grant and some gift monies, mitigation monies, which is the product of an enormous amount of very hard work that the Rec Commission and the Rec staff, together with the planning board, working with a developer in town, have done to bring together a whole bunch of moving parts. And the result, and I don't want to steal their thunder again, so I'm just going to say the result is something wonderful that they're going to talk about. But I just wanted to be sure that the board understood that the Commission, Debbie and her staff, Donna and the planning board have done a really great piece of work here. Mark Resnick did a wonderful piece of work and produced a tremendous value for the town. So, having said that.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Oh, and the nature of the emergency.
Right, yes, we need to explain that.
Is if we don't get this taken care of tonight and we wait two weeks for the next board meeting, there may not be time to get a whole bunch of complicated paperwork done prior to December 31st, which is the deadline for all this to happen.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
And thank you for understanding that we did need to get this done tonight. It is an extenuating, time-sensitive issue and under those circumstances is why we're here tonight. And we know that this is typically not how we're supposed to appear before you. What has happened is through the hard work of the planning board and Mark Resnick, we received $16,000 as a part of a mitigation package from Mr. Lynch down at Mill Street Preserves. And though most gifts don't come with any strings attached, we did agree that we would use that for the betterment of the Coacasset River Recreation Area properties. And in looking at Coacasset River Recreation Area properties, one of the things that we don't have is a playground that would not only benefit the children and the families that utilize that properties, but would also benefit the neighborhood as a whole. Though there's not a great deal of a neighborhood, there are two pieces that are becoming a neighborhood. So we as a board had decided that we would put in a playground. $16,000 does not buy a whole lot of playgrounds if you know what a playground buys. At the same time, we came across the desk of Foxborough Recreation was Game Time, which is a very well thought of, great corporation of not only playground equipment, but has a great reputation in town, a great reputation across the board, was offering matching grants. So we applied for that grant and we're lucky enough to become a recipient of it. So we now have $32,000 at every disposal. So for putting in for that grant and getting it, we will now be getting a $25,000 playground at no cost to the community. And it's not a $32,000 playground because the $25,000 is the materials. The remainder comes with the installation and the shipping. And the time-sensitive issue that Mr. Pagos was speaking of was that the grant has its limits and we have to take delivery of all of the materials before the end of the year. And we're lucky because we can store it at Coacasset River Recreation Area in a secure location, which is where the pool is. We don't have to put it out to bid because they are a part of the Governor's Purchasing Alliance. Mr. Pagos had me do my homework to make sure that that is accurate. And Mr. Pagos will be happy to know that I called the Massachusetts Municipal Association and actually spoke to someone that knows him, a Mr. Paul Bockelman.
This could be trouble.
Who said, I said, we have a new, we have a new town manager who is asking me to dot my i's and cross my t's. And he said, that wouldn't be Mr. Pagos, would it? And I said, are you kidding me? He said, let me get right back to you. He wasn't back to me within one minute to assure me that Game Time is in fact a part of this alliance. And good for you for making me do my homework. And so we don't even have to put it out to bid, which is even, you know, more time-saving. I can't say enough about the hard work and the collaborative effort that exists between Mark Resnick and the planning board. They work hard on these mitigation packages. Foxborough Rec has been the recipient of several. And we are very, very grateful and very, very respectful of those. And the fact that this is now the second playground that Foxborough Rec has built at no cost to the town. The first being at Payson when we worked with Kabooma and the Patriots on that. And now another one at Mill Street speaks volumes about the dedication of recreation to look outside the box and to find revenue streams and develop relationships and collaborations, not only with other boards, but, you know, other entities like Game Time to find the monies and move forward and provide recreation at no additional cost to the town. I couldn't be prouder of the board. I couldn't be prouder of the department, the planning board, Mark Resnick. It just is a real feel-good. It's just a real feel-good movement on all of our parts.
One of the things from the board's perspective is we came before advisory. We came before the selectmen in different situations to preserve Mill Street complex. Keep the cabins, keep the, you know, we just renovated the floors and the lighting down there. So all that obviously takes time, money, volunteers and so forth. So with the budget that we have per the advice of the advisory, we look for things like this to assist us in, you know, getting things completed and improved. And I'm friends with the planning board and they helped us out. Seems pretty good to make this happen. Guarantee you in the future, you're going to see a lot of nice things down there on Mill Street.
How do you catch wind of the opportunity for the grant? Is there a central location to go for those or you just have people who's?
Well, we're, you know, we're on a bazillion mailing list in Game Time and Emmy O'Brien's. Any playground equipment company will send you all of their literature. And you just have to sift through it. And this one caught my eye and I had actually put it aside, which unfortunately, had I caught on or looked at it earlier, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be under this time crunch. But I wasn't always aware of the $16,000 that was coming down our way. Because once it said matching grants, I was like, oh, we don't really have it. But once I put the 16 together with the matching grant, it all came together.
Right.
And the Moms Club has donated $2,000 towards playground equipment. I asked them if they cared if it went to Booth, which is typically where they like to go. They said they didn't, so we have an opportunity to expand on this because this is the type of equipment that you can expand on.
And most of the equipment that you buy now has to be childproof, safe, inspected to make sure there's no flaws in the equipment.
So of course we will be calling on our friends at Tree and Park and all of our friends and family around town to get it playground ready. But it's a clean slate down there. There's nothing, there's no trees, there's no, you know, there's no barriers to prevent this from going up easily. And it won't be until the spring, so.
Is it going to be this blue and gold?
No, it's not. It shouldn't be blue and gold.
Don, I think it should be.
No, you don't want to go up, you don't want to drive down those beautiful wooded areas and see blue and gold. That was the one thing I said. It's going to be beige and green. It's going to kind of blend. Are those blue and gold?
She gets her way.
Key pictures, yeah.
Oh, no.
I think it looks cool.
Oh, you got the.
But maybe because it's on a white background, it's not on a green background.
No, they're going to be muted blue, muted brown and green.
You know what, Deb, you did such a great job. You picked the colors, that's fine. It's great, everything will be fine.
So we are excited. So we are requesting that you accept the $16,000. When we do the paperwork, it will go into the Mill Street Gift Fund because we have two different accounts, one for Mill Street, one for South. And that's where we'll draw upon to pay for this equipment as quickly as possible.
I just, I think it's fantastic, especially since it's the second time around. This is the second playground that you guys have done. I know you guys work hard. I'm very familiar with Game Time. I don't know if you've shopped the other playground manufacturers, but they do have, they've been around for a while.
They did tailor school. I didn't realize that until they told me today.
And they're top of the line. They do focus a lot in handicapped accessibility, as they all do, but they were the leaders in this. And it's going to be maintenance-free, it's going to last for a long time. And you guys should be proud of, you know, bringing a top-notch product into the playground. Good work.
So what's the motion then? How do you want to order?
I'm accept, to accept the check for $16,000 and the grant.
Well, no, you don't have to accept the grant.
Just the gift, yeah.
Motion to accept the gift of $16,000 from?
Lynch.
Joseph Lynch.
Joseph Lynch.
Second. To go into the Mill Street Recreation Area.
So moved in with gratitude.
Second in the ring. All in favor? Aye. Thank you guys.
Lucky fundraiser tonight.
Congratulations.
Oh, thanks, yeah. We have fundraisers going on tonight.
Want to tell anyone they can still run down there? That's at Mill Street?
Yep.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And the chief, you have some citizens input?
Just a brief comment. I've been contacted by several residents about traffic concerns in the downtown area. And there's been a request for additional signage about speed. Unfortunately, when we were doing our version of the Big Dig, several of the speed signs approaching the common disappeared over time because the whole downtown area is supposed to be a 20 mile per hour zone. And it's been suggested in our work with Mr. Swanson to get additional signage put up to alert motorists, as well as trying to target the downtown area in terms of speeders and other motor vehicle violations over the next month. But I did, the last citizen that was talking to me about it, I did say I would bring it to the board's attention because he felt very concerned about it, especially with the pedestrians. I do think the different markers that Mr. Swanson has put out has had a positive impact on, you know, cars actually stopping for any pedestrians that are in the crosswalk. But that's an ongoing battle.
I know, it always will be, okay.
But I just wanted to update the board on those things.
So you spoke to Bob about it?
I'm going to be speaking to him tomorrow. I was meeting with one of the citizens late this afternoon. I'll be talking with him to see if we could get some of those signs replaced in the downtown area.
Is it mostly the people coming along, 140 coming into the common or is it the other?
Actually, Mechanic Street also is problematic. I think they perceive the stop sign at that intersection as situational.
Optional.
Yeah.
Or optional, instead of coming to a complete stop because of the ongoing traffic. But I think some additional signs approaching the common further out with a reduced speed might help slow them down, at least to make better judgment.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob has some citizens input.
I'll stand up here because I want to show the map. I just want to update the board and the town on our open space plan. We've got a map that's being passed around and it is available. It's using an old GIS system, which I want to talk about later in the budget process because that's one of my goals, is to get the GIS system updated. And also want to introduce our part-time conservation agent, Jane Pierce. And she will give more of the detail on the open space plan.
Oh, just like that? Well, I guess I need to update you on what's going on. I have been given the task of completing this open space plan, which expired in the early 90s, I believe. And the commission has been trying to get it done from what I can gather, since around 2004 anyway. But it's picked up speed rapidly. And I did have a $2,000 grant that I received for dedicated time to work on it. So I've done a lot of research about the parcels and the whole different data layers and that kind of thing. And now we have managed, I have managed to score an intern from AmeriCorps. And she has a recent degree in planning and she's helping with this. As a matter of fact, we're going to have a meeting. Our next meeting is going to be this Friday at 12:30. And hopefully she, her plan was to get a lot of the maps that I've put together in a consistent format and using an up-to-date GIS system. Because ours is at around ArcView 3 and it's up to around ArcView 9 in the real world. So that's been a little bit of a challenge. But we're going along pretty rapidly. And I'm hoping to get it all buttoned up by the end of December so that we can put the drafts out for all of you and other citizens and departments and committees to review, give your comments. And then we will go on from there. Also, Kevin's new intern, Tim, is looking over our Word document with the information that a lot of people have put together. A lot of what I've done is simply pull everything together, although I have done a lot of other things too. And he actually met yesterday with the state person named Melissa Cryan, who the plan will be given to once it is finished. So he's kind of getting her input as to.
I'm sorry, to whom does it go? Did you just?
Melissa Cryan. And I believe she's at the, I think it's EEOEA now. But she is, that's the state. And she's the person who will review it and say, this is good, this isn't good, redo this or approve it. And the basis for these plans is so that the town can acquire grants. It's a working document, but it's the town can get grants for open space and recreation. But also it goes into other grant applications as well. You get points if you have certain plans. So this is going to add points as well.
Score is, this is, I think, five or six points on it. So this is major points on that. And that leverages community development block grant monies, as well as water sewer, infrastructure grants. So this is a big, big step forward to getting that Commonwealth capital score approved.
Yes. So I haven't heard from Tim yet, but he got the poop on what we need, I'm sure. And this is where we are at so far, pretty much. Judy Johnson on the commission and I have, she did an awful lot of work on the GIS data layers using the town's information. And then I was pecking away at it myself. And she actually took some of the information onto her little laptop that she has with a higher level of ArcView and has so far gotten, put this together. I think that may be the next iteration or it may be the same one, I can't remember. So as you can see, there are a couple that still have question marks on this plan. I believe we've resolved those. And I think the one that I gave you does not have parcels. I should know. Yes, this was, this doesn't have parcels. And today, as a matter of fact, I managed to get inspired enough to squeeze some time to update our website. We have a link on our website to the open space and recreation plan. And I just gave a little brief blurb about it. And then I put up about six of our maps, which are pretty good maps for information, if nothing else. They're not the final version, it's still a work in progress. But my plan is, once we have finished sections, I will put them on the website so that people can review them. And like I said, when I get this all together, I'll be sending out letters to different departments and such. Just a one-page thing, a piece of paper for them to look online and then give their input hopefully in writing because then that will go with the plan when we actually do give it to the state. So we're getting there, we're getting close.
That's good news, Jane.
And I encourage anybody who is interested, because this is a working document. It is based on what town residents want for their town. And we've done a survey back in 2009. They held a, they held a meeting with a presentation back in 2009 as well. And now we're just doing the last-minute stuff with what I'm calling the open space committee. But it really is open to anybody who's interested and we welcome anybody who'd like to come to be there. It's going to be this Friday at 12:30, right here.
Can I just add a couple? I actually went to the Conservation Commission last night when they were presenting this. And it's, the open space plan has been kind of inching along over the last probably two years. And, you know, what you guys have accomplished recently with, you know, the intern coming on free of charge. She's doing it with no charge to the town. And really putting this together, I know the software you're using, it's out of date and it's kind of Band-Aids to get it to this point. But if you understand it, you know, a big deal at the end, you get something called an open space plan, but it's much more than that. I tried to get a grant about a year and a half ago. We did a great package and the first question was, does a town have an open space plan approved? And we said no, and we basically threw it out. This is going to open the door to a lot of opportunities for the town. The terms that you use in GIS, if I can just explain it so, I wanted to bring this up.
I forget people don't know the terms.
Yeah, later, because we were talking about goals and objectives later. What GIS is, it stands for Geographic Information System. So from a conservation perspective, you're going to see open space, woods, wetlands, slopes, soils, all that stuff. But from a town's perspective, with the same software and the same tools, you're going to see, a resident's going to be able to come in and see his property. He's going to see an aerial, he's going to see taxes, setbacks, zoning, overlay districts. The police and fire use it, the water and sewer can use it for the roads and infrastructure. The school system certainly can use it to do their bus routes. And most towns have it. Foxborough is very far behind on that, with that respect. If you go to most of the towns, if you go on to their assessor, you can relatively quickly pull up all that information here. You pull out the books, you pull out the ruler and, you know, it takes probably, you know, one to two minutes using GIS. First one to two hours, you know, with Bill Casper's time and Mark Resnick's time. So, you know, if we're talking on goals and objectives later to pull things together. I know you're looking at a grant, you know, for $400, you get three or $4,000 worth of training and services. So, you know, your department's looking at it. But I think if we look broader for the other departments, I think it's going to push us into the next. You know, if we're looking at selling property or purchasing property and accepting it, how it all fits together. This is a fantastic tool and you guys are going to open up a big door for us.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you. Any other citizens input? Come on up, Gordon.
Gordon Green, Villa Drive. At your last meeting, you had discussions about the possibility of trying to get funds based on the Super Bowl games played at Gillette Stadium. The craft organization has in effect donated to the state's athletics, the use of their facilities. And I think it would be a disgrace if we as a town tried to make money on somebody's charitable contribution. So I sincerely hope that you won't try to negotiate anything with the crafts. I think they're doing a fine thing. Don't get me wrong, there are plenty of places that I've always disagreed with the crafts and pushed for mitigation. But this is the case, I think we should just forget it and be a good citizen. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. Any other citizens input? There being, oh, you do. Do you have another one? I thought you did, Kevin.
Oh, I was scratching my head.
Okay, all right. So you've got to be careful. I'm right on it. Okay, then, Jim, do you want to read the public hearing, please? And do you want to come up for your?
This is a legal notice. The Board of Selectmen. I'll let him sit down first. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 30th, 2010, at 7:30 PM in the Andrew, in the Andrew A. Gala Jr. Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass. On application for change of license type from wine and malt to all alcohol for Citital Corporation DBA Bangkok Cafe, 369 Central Street, Foxborough, Mass. Manager, and I apologize in advance, is it Wrong?
Wrong day.
Wrong day?
Yes.
All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Mass, James DeVellis Clerk. And this was published one time on November 12th, 2010.
So we want to step it up a little bit down there, is that what we want to do? Okay. I just wanted to ask one question. Kevin, do you know how many all alcohol licenses we have left for the town?
Yes, we have one all alcohol pouring license. And one beer and wine pouring license. And we have no licenses left at Chestnut Green of the special act ones. No licenses left at Patriot Place of the special act ones. No club licenses and no package store licenses. So it's just two, both pouring, one all alcohol, which this will now take, and one beer and wine. So if this is approved, there'll be two beer and wine pouring licenses of all the licenses we have. Those are the only two open.
Okay. I just wanted to add it.
Should we have these gentlemen identify themselves and address?
Oh, yeah.
Should we do that? I might have missed it.
No, just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Luang De, Titi Sutikul, address 369 Central Street in Foxborough, Massachusetts 02035.
My name is Todd Glickman, 53 Arborwood Drive in Burlington, Mass.
Thank you. So do you want to talk about?
Yes. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to come before you. My name is Luang De, Titi Sutikul, or you can call me Danny. I opened Bangkok Cafe in Foxville Plaza 18 years ago and enjoy serving the people of Foxborough my healthy and delicious Thai food. During this time, I have been able to serve the Thai beer and the Thai lotus wine to provide the taste of Thailand to our customer. For a number of years, our customers have asked if they could have exotic tropical cocktail with their meals. If granted this license, I plan to offer some traditional Thai cocktail for our dying customer. And I have prepared some sample drink that I'd be happy to choose, you know. And thank you for your consideration and I am happy to answer your questions.
They look yummy. Yeah, I know, yummy.
I'm sorry, Todd, are you?
Danny's friend and moral support.
Okay.
I only ask because I don't know if you were an attorney or go through.
I'm a weatherman.
Seriously?
Seriously.
Danny, so you haven't had any problems with beer or wine or anything? And would this mean that you would want to put a bar in there? Or is this specifically just for people that ask?
Just the people of Ark, we don't going to put any.
So you're not going to have a bar?
No, we don't have no construction.
These special cocktails are what you're going to add to the menu is that?
Correct, yes, because it limit, you know, menu, not so many variety, you know, just some exotic tropical drink that we create, you know, along with the meal.
That's pretty neat. Yeah, I like that. You'll still have beer and wine though, because it.
Yes.
The floor plan that you submitted, this is as the restaurant is today?
Correct, yes.
So are you making changes in it?
Yes, changing.
Okay.
Can I jump in with a question?
Sure, sure.
The, you had a problem late ninety-three? Um, says one-day suspension for not carding a patron, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And what, what, what happened there? Do you remember?
Yeah, uh, I remember because, uh, it's, it's the town, I think the town sent out the, you know, to, to make sure that all the restaurants it had been checked and carded and then, you know, we, we missed, we missed that only one time, that's it.
Okay.
And since then, we have all the server, well-trained and, you know.
The route tip certified and everything that you need to do. Chief, you, you, you know?
I didn't even recall the nineteen ninety-three incident. However, you know, Bangkok Cafe has been an exceptional operation. Uh, no problems with any of the clientele. You wouldn't even know that they had a beer and wine license.
Right, right. Yep.
What time you open until?
On the weekday, uh, until nine o'clock on the weekend, at ten o'clock.
Yep, we can go. Do this quicker.
Don't let him go first, 'cause he's cooking tonight.
Now, there's a letter in the package from Harvey Smith, who actually owns the building?
Correct, yes.
So he's your landlord?
Correct.
He doesn't have a problem with it? But is this in the area that is gonna be restructured? You may or may not know this with the Big Y?
Big Y, yeah, we know.
So do you know enough that, are you gonna be relocated?
Yes.
Tempor- temporarily and then, how does, from your understanding, how is that gonna work?
The Big, uh, the Big Y Company, the food company, they already come and have a meeting for all the tenants and then, uh, that's, uh, I was told that they're gonna relocate it. You know, on the other side, they're gonna renovate, you know, the, the warehouse.
Foxborough Furniture.
Furniture, and then they're gonna renovate. And then, once this piece done, so we're gonna be, uh, renovation and all cutting and then, uh, move to the other side of the, of these sides.
Okay, so, I'm just making sure that it's, this isn't gonna last a couple months and then, but you, you're gonna move the business over?
Yes.
And back, but keep the license back and forth?
Correct, yes, yes.
But Madam Chair, if I might add?
Sure.
Uh, from my understanding is that this is all word of mouth at the moment.
Sure.
Right.
And that there have been no assurances. And I think the tenants in the plaza would appreciate the opportunity to have some assurances from the new organization coming in that the current longtime tenants will be taken care of because I don't think we've heard that yet. And that's, that's a concern at the moment.
And I, and I, and I would suggest that you folks, um, when it starts coming to the planning board meetings, um, that you attend and, um, you know, state your concerns during the planning board.
So how's that work, Kevin? If, um, they have to relocate, do they come before us again just for a change of?
They have to come for the, uh, application for change of premises.
Right.
Um, and presumably
Simple as that?
Change of floor plan as well.
Right.
'Cause they'd, they'd have to change up the floor plan.
But they don't have to go to the planning board or anything like that for us, right?
Well, it depends on if where they're relocating isn't allowed use, which, which I'm sure would be. Um, and there's a notification process for A, B, C, C on the change of location, change of floor plan. But that's pretty perfunctory.
Right.
If you approve it, they're, they're gonna say fine.
I, I just think that we should, the planning board, you know, should keep the tenants down there abreast of what's going on and, and let them know when things are coming up and what we, what's being discussed and things.
I'll make a point, uh, to relay to the planning board and the staff, the board's wishes to make sure that the existing tenants are kept informed of what's going on.
And that the planning board, um, you know, lets the tenants know what is expected of them during these moves and things like that, is, you know, 'cause there's, there's a few licenses. It's not just Danny's license down there, there's a few, so.
Danny's a, I don't know about the other tenants, but Danny's a tenant at Wool there. And so, he could be pushed right out onto one forty if there's not
Yeah, and that's, I wasn't bringing this up to challenge you, I just wanted, because I think I was aware of that.
I appreciate.
I didn't want you to invest in something and then a month later saying, why did I spend the money on stock and a license?
It's his livelihood, so hopefully we'll be there for a long time.
Right, right. Well, you already have been, so, you know, you have our, you have our vote. And the chief has already spoke well of you too, Danny, so that's something good.
You ready for a motion, Linda?
Um, yep.
Oh, we do, we have to close, maybe, yeah, motion to close the public hearing.
Any other discussion? All in favor of closing? Aye. Four zero, Pauline.
Um.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application, uh, for retail alcoholic beverage license as presented.
Second.
If I could suggest that you add to that, subject to the, um, submitted floor plan and with table service only.
Do you got that, Pauline? That's my motion.
And just so the applicant understands that, because this is a common misunderstanding with license holders, if the floor plan changes, that requires a, um, submission to the board.
That's why we asked about the bar and the whole. Is there?
Is there a second?
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Four zero, Pauline. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
These look yummy, we'll, we'll be done in about a half an hour.
We don't have the license yet. Chief will be following to turn us in. Thanks so much.
Because I like to say umbrella drinks are a beautiful thing.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, and next, we have the special town meeting warrant.
We, um, find ourselves unfortunately the same place we were in last week.
I know it.
Which is the primary reason for the special town meeting. The deal with the Patriots is still not yet ratified. So, as I said to you in, and I don't know if you all got a chance to read my town manager's report, I do apologize, I didn't get to it till last night, 'cause it took a lot of time to do. Um, so if you didn't get a chance to read it, I certainly don't blame you. But because that deal's not done yet, and that's the primary reason for calling the special, you know, I, I can't advise you whether you should even bother to take the time to go through the warrant because if, you know, you might say article, an article
Right.
shouldn't be on the special but should be on the annual. And you might end up not even having a special if we don't get this thing done with the Patriots. So, I, I just don't know if it's worth your time to go through the whole thing or not. It, it's really up to you. And I mentioned that early because the chief
The chief last time.
Unfortunately sat through his for two hours the last time, um, only
I thought, I
And I apologize, that was my bad, because I should've said something to you much earlier.
He enjoys it up here, though.
He did say that.
Oh, that's brutal.
Right, didn't you say, that's right? This is, this is it. Everybody at home's watching us too, chief.
It was Board of Selectmen Dancing With The Stars.
Yep.
Can we discuss, uh, chief's articles?
Yeah, I mean, you, sure.
I, I honestly have no problem if you wanna hold off until we actually have a special town meeting.
Yep.
At this point, I think that that appears to be the driving force, that there's no need for it right now.
Right, 'cause a lot of them don't, a lot of the other things don't really warrant a special meeting, do you think? How, how do I say that? Like, I'm not saying that they're not important, 'cause they are, but
Anything that's really controversial is gonna draw a lot of people, that is gonna change
Exactly.
The, the only thing I'm concerned about is, there's eighteen of them. Not knowing what's gonna be on the regular town meeting. This is eighteen you could take a, take care of. But without anything in here that's biting for people to come, I don't know if we're gonna get a quorum.
And I, and I've got two more articles that aren't on there because as, as the days go by, other things come up. And I, and I didn't give you those two yet. Um, one is for, to fund a downtown study because that's come up repeatedly and looks like if we're gonna do it, that's something we oughta get to sooner rather than later. So if we have a special town meeting, we oughta get, get to it, get it funded and get it done. And you know, for the life of me, I can't think of what the heck the other one was, but it was, something else came up. But again, none of this bears necessarily the board's consideration until you know that in fact, there's gonna be a special town meeting. And if we don't, if we don't consummate that deal, I would say sometime in the next five or six weeks, because you've got a six or seven-week lead time. Now you're into the end of February. By the time you get into March, it's, it's really a question whether we should undergo the expense of a special when you're only six or seven weeks from the annual.
Kevin, do you know what the expense is approximately?
Well, I don't know what it is here. I can duck into the other room and ask Bob real quick. But generally speaking, you're talking a couple of thousand bucks.
Okay, so it's not that much?
I thought it was like three, yeah.
One question, do we mail the warrant to all residents? Okay, 'cause some towns do that and that, that pushes the expense up considerably. So if we don't do that, we're talking about printing of, um, a few hundred copies of the warrant, publishing it some in the paper probably because
It's not twenty thousand, sorry to interrupt you, it's, it's
No, I would say three, thirty-five hundred, that's in the ballpark. The checkers, um, and, you know, basically that's it. It's not a, it's not a hugely expensive proposition, but one where these days, we don't even wanna spend three or four grand if we don't have to.
And if it's not gonna have a, if we, if there's a possibility that we can have a quorum, that's, you know.
Yeah.
And looking at it, there
For this stuff, no.
It's hard to get people to flip up.
The flip side of this to consider, though, is most of those articles probably, you probably would be inclined to approve to put on a warrant.
Yes.
And if we don't do a special, you're gonna have a jagundus, um, annual.
Annual.
So.
We've done that before too.
And I, I know the, the advisory committee had, is concerned about that. You know, they're, they're probably the first ones to say that.
Yeah, we, we, as a precaution, I met with them a couple of weeks ago, in fact, Jim was there and I
Yeah.
We sent them the warrant as a, just as a cautionary note. We said, look, this is about what it is now, we're not saying this is the final warrant by any means, but this is what we got so far. So that if they want their liaisons to begin, you know, prepping, talking to department heads that are proponents, they can do that. At least get a little bit of a head start, so that's where we are.
We have a couple of weeks still to see what else comes along and then we can make the determination.
There's no, you haven't voted a closing date for the warrant yet.
Right.
The way the law operates, warrants are always open. So anytime anybody submits something, it automatically goes on the next warrant. Um, if it's a petition, a hundred signatures for a special, ten for an annual.
Yep.
So this, so if somebody submits a citizen's petition to take a hundred signatures, you must put that on. Everything else that's submitted, which right now, there's no citizen's petition on there. Everything else is your business. You're the own, you, you own the warrant.
Right.
So, you knock any article off you don't want on, uh, for any reason whatsoever that you decide to take it out. Um, and by contrast, you can put anything on that you think should be on. So you can make it bigger or smaller as you, as you deem fit.
Linda, just my two sentences.
Yes.
Unless we have the meeting to deal with the deal that we're still working on, I, I'd be too cheap, I'd rather have a long night, uh, in May than spend the money now.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
But there's nothing to say you can't bring it to the AdCom again and just say if they wanna start getting work on, they can go out and solicit from the different boards.
Yeah, my present
Get that behind them.
What we told them is, most of what's on there, they're probably gonna see on the annual if we don't have a special.
So the work wouldn't be wasted.
You may knock some things off. Um, the chief has got some articles on there, as he's probably told you, some of those are pretty controversial. And so it's gonna be, uh, and, uh, chief and I have talked about them. You may decide you're not gonna put one or two of those on because the chances are pretty good that they could result in some litigation if town meeting approved them. And we kinda gotta decide, do we wanna be the ones to test this new ground or not? Um, that's, that's a, that's a, by definition, a policy call that only you folks can make. When you're ready, the night you're ready to do it, the chief will give you the pros and cons, um, and then you can decide what to do. So, but other than those, I don't see anything on that warrant that's not gonna reappear.
Right.
You're gonna see it on the annual.
Yeah.
We told the AdCom, our suggestion is go ahead and start working on the stuff because you're gonna see it again. Whether it's a special or it goes to the annual, you're gonna see it again.
And I, I, I mean, to the point where I, I want the full board here for that discussion anyway, so. Um, I guess we'll table it for tonight.
Okay.
Okay? Yep, Bob.
One question, Linda.
Yep.
As Conservation has one request on there.
Yep.
Will that go out to the legal people to make sure that the wording is direct? I mean, regardless of whether we have a special or not?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Town Council's already got the draft warrant and he's been asked to, um, work on finalizing the wording on all of it. Um, so that, that's already being done. And all departments, boards, committees that submitted articles have approval to talk to town council to get the wording final, so give them a call.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so we'll just table it for tonight, but chief, you're more than welcome to stay.
I appreciate that, awesome.
Okay, so we will go on to action items? Oh, yeah, do we wanna do that without Larry? Do you wanna?
Um, we should wait.
I think
Is it possible, um, Kevin, to get any input? I know you had a lot of meetings with, and information from your department heads about their priorities and see if we can get some of that information and put it into this format so that perhaps we could do some prioritizing before we meet and, and discuss it as a full board.
Sure. Um, I, I told you that I've been putting stuff into the computer, I wanted to actually show you that, I really do, I really did.
You have new computer yet, by the way?
Yours is like, yours, your print is smaller than Pauline than, uh
I got a new laptop, just came in today.
Okay, great.
And it, but we don't have the software all set yet, so we're getting there. But I'm pretty much doing everything at home, 'cause that town manager report I sent you, I sent it in here, um, Sunday night to finish working on it Monday morning, I couldn't open it. I sent myself a spreadsheet that I did at home, I couldn't open it. So, um, but we're getting on top of that finally and I think that'll get fixed. This is a simple Excel spreadsheet. All I did is I listed all the stuff that departments gave me, um, and then how many times departments did it, or which departments did it. So, I was gonna give this to you, but to be honest with you, it doesn't really mean anything. It's just a laundry list of stuff. Took, took a lot of time to cull through all the submissions, um, and get them into some order. What I have to do with this now, and I've just gotta find some time to do it, is take your list that you folks did, match this up to it, take out the duplications, um, reasonably, I mean, we can't, we can't do all that in a year. That's, I mean, um, it's just, it's just enormous how many ideas came in, which is great. But we really gotta do some picking and choosing.
Yes.
So, I can give you this raw data. In fact, you know what, I'll, I'll, I'll copy it and give it to you before you leave tonight. It's just the raw data. And this just says, here's all the ideas, here's how many times it was asked for, and here's what the departments did ask. So it's, it's good information. Um, but then somehow, we gotta take this list and cull it down to what reasonably can be done. Um, you'll see down the bottom, I added a whole bunch of stuff and I'm not done adding yet. I've still got some more things in the office to add. So, um, and bearing in mind, by the time we finish this, we only have six months left in the year. So, um, I, I just gotta get on with that. I think the board, what would be helpful to me, is if the board would take the list that you've already done, um, and just have a little discussion about that, whether you do it tonight or in a couple of weeks, whenever you do it, to kinda flesh out a little bit about what you want to see done on some of those things that you've listed because some of them are pretty obvious, others are a little, I don't quite get it, what it is you want done. And it would be helpful if the board were to do that. You've already done all that work. So if you didn't do anything more than give me that input on the list you already did, we have a pretty good work plan for the year. And then if we selectively cull through this and added five or six or seven or eight or nine or ten more, that would be a pretty extensive bit of work for six months 'cause that, that's about what we've got left. Um, and of course, the biggest thing going on right now is the budget. That's, that's gonna start consuming
Right.
Basically full-time for about two months. I won't be doing anything but that. So, that's kinda where we are. I know Lorraine's, um, done some great work organizing the board's thoughts and that's on a piece of paper. And that, that's the thing that I need you guys to give me a little more direction on in terms of what do you wanna see with that?
So hopefully we'll all That we'll all, yeah.
If I could suggest, and I hate to do this, um, oh, he's smiling.
It's a Saturday meeting, is that what you're
Yeah. You had mentioned to me some time ago that you do occasional workshops.
Yep.
This is just such a brutal time of year to try to even think about that. And I'm not saying necessarily that's what we need to do, but I think maybe we need some time devoted to just the goals and objectives. And whether that's a workshop or whether we just take a couple hours at your next meeting and say, we're not gonna do anything but this, um, and then maybe a few action items or stuff that can't wait. I think that would be a good idea, 'cause, um, that's a fair body of work just going over that list. We're not even talking about this one.
Do we have like a, just another Tuesday night meeting just devoted to this?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Next Tuesday? We can see if Larry will be here.
Yeah. I know that we, we also spoke about, um, taking the book of policies and, and.
Well, I have a report for you on that, you're just gonna love that.
We have to come up with a date for that too. Eventually we have to come up with a date for that.
Do another Tuesday night for that also.
I'll look at my BlackBerry, only to look at my calendar. I've been.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
That'd be the seventh?
Our next meeting is the seventh anyway. No, it is.
I'm sorry, we're looking for next Tuesday, is that it?
Next Tuesday would be the seventh.
So that would be for goals and objectives?
Yep.
Okay.
If, um.
I'm getting a root canal. No, no, no.
Right now, there isn't anything scheduled for next week.
Okay.
'Cause.
Well, we don't have anything next week. Um, we don't have a meeting next weekend.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
No, we met last week and this week. Usually it's every other week.
It's every other week.
It's the second and fourth that you meet, right?
But there happens to be.
I thought it was the first and third, it's the second and fourth.
Five weeks in November, so we're here three times this month. So.
So your regular meetings in December would be the fourteenth to the twenty-eighth.
Yes. But if we can get in touch with Larry, maybe we can do the goals and objectives next week, next Tuesday, and then on the twenty-first, maybe, well, I don't know, twenty, let's see how it goes.
Maybe we can save the policy for New Year's week.
Yeah, cause it's just.
So our, our meetings are the fourteenth and twenty-eighth, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was just thinking, we could throw in the twenty-first, but that's really close to Christmas and I'd rather not.
Seven weeks in a row of meetings.
No, I really, yeah, I mean.
Five weeks.
Well, I do have some.
The chief won't have anything to do that night, so.
All right, well then I'll, I will check with Larry to see if he's available next week.
Yep.
If so.
Let us know.
Get word out, uh, to the four of you.
Yep.
Um, post a special meeting.
Okay.
And it'll be just goals and objectives, that's it.
Yep, and we'll have to let Cable know, 'cause we'd like that to be televised also.
We should ask Frank if he can do it.
Frank, can you do it? Oh, Frank, can you do it? Frank and Frank? Yep, thumbs up.
Frank, it's good, good.
Okay. All right, that's good, that sounds good, right?
Yep.
Okay. As long as we post it, we should be all set.
Do we wanna hold off on the meeting minutes again?
Because of Larry, right? Okay. We'll go right on to the hacky license renewal. Um, this is a renewal for our hacky's license and it's been reviewed by Deputy Chief Chandler.
So, do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I'd make a motion that we approve the renewal for hacky's license application for Ramaswami Kodejere, Kodejere. My apologies for the pronunciation.
For two years.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Was zero points. And next we have a request for the ninety-nine, um, to open at eleven o'clock for the remainder of. I don't think we can do eleven yet, can we, Kevin?
Can you do what?
Um, they, they wanna open up at eleven on Sundays for the remainder of.
We can't do two thousand and eleven yet.
We can't do two thousand and eleven, right? We can only, can only do two thousand and ten right now, for the remainder of two thousand and ten. Because they all, all the new applications come in.
Yeah, I think Sandra tell, told me that your policy is you do them all at once with a blanket motion.
Yeah, well, we pulled some of the applications, but.
Is it?
No, we've been doing them individually, but only for the year two thousand and ten.
Right.
Right.
So on December thirty-first.
Yep.
They'd have to come back in again.
So I think we need to just do it for two thousand and ten.
Would it be part of their two thousand and eleven application that they would be requesting?
Yes, I think they're.
Wasn't that, um, I, I thought I remember discussing this last year, that we just take care of it, you know, at the beginning and for some reason that that was a problem, don't know if that was. Really true or a red herring, but, uh, could we, do you know, Kevin, whether or not we could do, do that, allow the eleven o'clock from the beginning?
Because.
In just one, in the, you know, just one application versus these two pieces of paper?
Sure.
Because, I mean, we've basically, we've made a policy, sorta.
Yeah, I think it just changed like right after maybe the last year's licenses were approved.
Yeah, because remember last year, some of them, we didn't wanna, we didn't approve.
I know I wasn't, me personally, I was inclined to approve all the eleven o'clock's year round, but I thought there were a few, Jim, did you, you weren't?
He wasn't here.
No, I, I just, I had an issue with one just 'cause of management issues, not because of policy.
Right, well, and I would too if there was a specific problem, but just as a general rule, if they're a good citizen, I'm okay with the eleven o'clock.
Yeah, and that's what chief says.
Wasn't the.
Well, that implicit.
Yep.
Wasn't the ninety-nine in here two months ago asking for this?
Yes, but I can't recall why it was a no.
Well, they came in.
It was a yes, we said yes. It was for early opening.
Wasn't that New Year's? Wasn't that for New Year's?
That was, that was, um, that wasn't ninety-nine, that was, um.
They weren't the one you had the problem with, Jim?
The Piccadilly? No, I thought it was the ninety-nine.
They were in here, but weren't they, what were they in here for, chief? Weren't they in here because of?
I thought they were talking about.
Your tips.
Yes.
That's what they were here for.
They would've done it twice, so.
And they were here for something else about ours' operation.
This one has two thousand and eleven, that, that might be.
Yeah, so we, I think we already, they were here twice, one stood up with a microphone, talking about your tips, um, proposal, but two meetings before that, 'cause I, I remember I recused myself, I sat down and it was early operation. I think what they did is they came in for two thousand and ten and now they're asking for two thousand and ten and eleven.
I, I tell you what, Jim, I, I think you're probably right, but I, I'd be willing to make the vote again for two thousand and ten just in case you're wrong, because there's only, you know, a few Sundays left and it's gonna do no harm if we approve it again.
I, there isn't, I mean.
Yeah.
If you're duplicating what you already did, no big deal.
So I, I, I'll make a motion that we approve the request, but only for the year two thousand and ten, for the remainder of the year two thousand and ten, and again, um, subject to food service. Any other conditions I should add, Kevin?
No, because all the other conditions are already in place with respect to the, um, the floor plan and things like that.
License itself.
All you're doing, all you're doing is extending their hours.
For ninety-nine?
For, for, yeah, for the ninety-nine restaurant.
Okay.
Second.
And when they come in for the renewal for next year, they can just say they want eleven to midnight, eleven to one, whatever it is.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Was zero points. Okay, now Lakeview, they're asking for two thousand and eleven.
I got this all messed up on you last time and I apologize.
That's okay. It's all right.
I told you exactly the opposite. I should've told you.
Okay.
And, um, Sandra very nicely gave me the dope slap the morning after. So I got it straightened out. What they do every year is they come in, as soon as it looks sorta kinda like the Patriots will make the playoffs.
Yep.
They, they ask you at that point, um, for approval for playoff dates for the one-day licenses. We can't put the dates in until we find out what the schedule's gonna be, um, and knock on wood.
All right, you're talking about, you're talking about first and goal, right?
Um, first and goal, right.
Right, I'm talking about, we, we still, we have to do the Lakeview Pavilion one first.
But that's for two thousand and eleven is their request, so.
But it's for, for tw- two thousand and eleven, so.
That's in the same category as ninety-nine for two thousand and eleven. When they come in for their renewal, they just put the new hours on that they want and unless you've got some problem with that, you do it.
So we don't need to act on this.
Yeah, there's no action on this since there's nothing for two thousand and ten.
Because didn't we already okay?
That's strictly for.
Lakeview for two thousand and ten?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if we didn't, we, you know, they're not requesting it now, so.
All right, okay.
So maybe it's as simple as putting a spreadsheet together since there's so many licenses and the twelve to eleven is new. I'm sure there's still others that haven't come in.
Right.
They're gonna come in, maybe we could.
Well, when they come in for the new year, right? For two thousand and eleven, well, hey, guys, do you want the eleven? The board's likely inclined.
When she sends out her letter of, reminder letter.
They don't really, I mean, we can make them go through a change of hours request and that's just, that's just causing businesses extra money and work and. You know, they're, they're coming in for their annual renewal in two weeks anyways, so it's just as easy to put the, the hour on it and, and make sure you understand that this is an hour increase, you know, try to give the business community a break.
Okay, so.
The minimums one hour.
So now, first and goal.
That's the one where they come in.
Right.
This time of year, ask you for the playoff dates for the one-day beer and wine, with the exact dates to be filled in once we get the NFL schedule and of course, we know how deep the Patriots go into the playoffs.
Okay.
And we can do that?
Yeah, and you routinely do that apparently and that, and there's certainly nothing that says you can't. I mean, they need to advertise this and get it going.
Right, right.
So they need to know if you're gonna give them permission. And I don't know anything about how their performance was, but I know the chief could tell you.
Actually, for all the years that they had the one-day licenses, we've never had any issue with playing down, having front of really consistent operation, but they don't have a big turnover in their staff, so that's really helpful.
Great.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Uh, so I'd make a motion, we approve the request for one-day all alcohol liquor licenses for, um, first and goal for possible playoff dates in January two thousand and eleven as to be determined.
I think you've got the licenses over there to sign.
Yep, we do. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Was zero points. Uh, Lorraine. And is Mark gonna come in and talk to us about?
Hmm, not that I know of.
It's just, he's just letting us know about the gathering.
Yeah, I think it's just.
It's basically just a heads up.
No action required on your part unless you want to submit comments, you can.
Right, just let us know.
You're not required to.
Yep, okay.
And frankly, I think they'd be shocked if we submit.
If we did, if we start telling them what to do? Yeah. Okay, so that's it for this evening?
Uh, one thing, you asked me to check on your policy book on it, not gonna take any time, except I'm gonna give you the good and the bad news.
Okay.
The good news is, well, there really isn't any good news. I'm sorry. That's your policy book, this thing is like monstrous.
Yep.
I can't believe I'm, now, as I thumb through this thing, uh, this weekend, what I found was that a lot of these things aren't policies, they're sort of, um, statements or some of these are even questions that were asked. Some of these things on the licensing, it's just a list of your license fees, which isn't the policy. So what I would, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through this, and, and some of these, by the way, are Andy's policies, which, you know, they're town administrat, they're town manager policies, some of these go back to town administrator policies, they go back a long ways, and they're instructions to the staff about how to do something that's under the, the administrator's control. So of this whole giant thing, I suspect that not all that many are actual policies of the board that need to come back to you to be reviewed. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna go through them.
Okay.
It'll take a couple hours, um, it's really not a huge onerous thing, um, probably one Bruins game, I'm thinking. And you just go through them and pull them out and then create a folder and then that's what you'll need to look at.
Right, right.
So I don't think it's gonna be quite as bad as we thought. Now, one thing you did ask me to pull out was your town council policy.
Yep.
Turns out, you got one, but it's, um, it is not really a board policy. All it is, is a statement that Andy sent out, which said to the departments, if you wanna use town council services, you've got to submit it in writing to the TA or selectmen for approval, um, and that's, that's, you know, what you were looking for was a policy that, that would provide instruction and guidance to the board members about how to access town council. And I think the board thought it had a policy on that and you don't. At least none we can find.
All right.
Um, in this huge book, there's a policy, this is it.
Yeah, it's just been oral, I think.
It's just been, yeah, yeah.
So I will, um, wrap something for you, there's three policies you've asked for and I'll, um, go through my, uh, files of policies, I've got selectman policy books on a half a dozen towns. Hopefully, somebody's got one of each of the kind you want to work as a draft.
What were the three, town council and?
Town council used by the board.
Right, yeah.
Processing of, um, class-two license applications, 'cause right, we had a little bit of an embarrassing thing last week. We brought one to the board only to find out it couldn't be acted on by the board 'cause it was in a zone that required a site plan and a special permit. So we need to have a review process. That was the second one. The third one was what?
Was just that, going through that book, I think.
No, there was actually a third policy you wanted written. And then the fourth thing was.
It'll come to you later.
Don't worry, I've got it written down.
Okay.
So I know what it is, I just don't know off the top of my head. So I should be able to get those three policies back to you in some sort of draft form. And what I'll do is get all these, get the draft forms, give them all to you and then depending upon the volume, you guys can decide whether you wanna try to knock off two or three at each regular meeting or you wanna have a special meeting to do them all.
Okay.
Hopefully it won't be too bad.
In, in your experience, do, in your other towns, have you guys lived by these policies or they just clicked?
They're the bible.
The bible.
You know, you'll have a, let's, let's say you'll have a policy on how to process a, um, class-two license application, used car. And it'll say, send it to the fire department so the fire department can inspect the premises and make sure all the fire suppression apparatus is in place. Send it to the, um, building inspector to be sure that it's appropriately zoned to allow class-two, which is the problem we get into last week.
Right.
Send it to the police chief, because there's a lot of criminal abuse of class-two licenses in Massachusetts. You know, and he'll query-check the applicant, because that's actually in the statute that you can query-check them. So with the application, you gotta have a query sign-off form. So that's the kind of stuff that you need in a policy. And once that's done and you approve it, that is the bible. We, if somebody comes in here with an application, it will not get on your agenda until it is complied with.
Understood, great.
Considering this was seventeen years ago.
Yeah, I know.
Great that you found it.
Don't throw anything away.
Well, I have to give, um, um, the, Sandra and, um, uh.
Chris?
Chris, um, all the credit, because, um, they've been, um, religiously keeping these things. I mean, these go back a long ways and kudos to them. I've never seen a policy book so well organized. Usually, I get to a town and it's like a bunch of papers covered with dust and, you know, paper mites and we gotta kinda go through it and make some sense. This is beautiful, I mean, it's great. But which, TA and selectmen is all mixed in here, we gotta pull it apart and redo it, but.
Can, can I ask you, um, on your town managers, town manager report, you said at the beginning, you're gonna be doing this for every meeting? Much?
I'm gonna try, um, now that I've got the laptop. The inconvenience is up until now, the only place I could write those is at home or here and once I started it at home, I couldn't work on it here, so I, so, and it takes hours to do and typically I do them on Sunday, 'cause I just, I did never get done in here, it's just, that takes too much time and concentration.
Now, what's your preference with this? I mean, you, you can hand it out, but if we don't read it at the meeting, it goes in the packet, the people at home don't get the benefit of it. Do you wanna summarize, you know, every week, do you wanna summarize it and go through it quickly?
It's really up to you guys, whatever you'd like me to do. I don't want it to be a burden to you and take up a ton of time on your agenda. I do give it to Frank now, I got his email address today, so he gets it.
Well, that's good.
Um, it goes, at the current time, it goes to board of selectmen, advisory committee, all department heads, Frank, um, and any, and basically anybody who'd like it, if they give me their email address, members of the public want it, I'll be happy to send it to them.
Can it go on the town website, or not appropriate?
That's a good idea.
That's what I was wondering.
We can do that, we have the technology.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
That's a great idea, I'll do that. I've, yeah, there's one town manager, I actually went to a presentation a couple of weeks ago, the manager up in West Boylston, who has a blog, and he does a regular blog with folks, which is kinda interesting.
Yeah, it's, well.
I don't know if I'm ambitious enough to do that, but I could put this out there, and then people wanna.
I think people would really like it.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay, I'll do that, sure. And if there's anybody else, um, Jim gave me a suggestion for somebody to add, and I did, um, and if there's anybody else, any of you can think of.
It was just the AdCom, I think you had him on there already.
But if there's anybody else, any of you can think of, or the public wants to email and get added to, I'm happy to do it. You know, once I put it on the list, it's just a matter of
Right.
one button, and it goes.
Good.
I love technology.
All right, is that it?
One other little thing, and I swear I'll.
We invited him.
I'll shut up after this. We got the invitation to the, to the MIA, Mass Interlocal Insurance Association Annual Meeting, which is part of the MMA Annual Meeting in January, and luncheon on Saturday, January twenty-second, this is when they elect the officers for MIA, um, there's a lunch meeting. You cannot get in unless I send your name in now, so if you even think you might be going to the annual meeting, tell me, I'll put your name on it. If, if you're absolutely sure you're not, then we won't bother to send it, but if you think you might, I'll send it in, so, yeah, you think you might?
What's, what's the date on it?
Um, January twenty-second.
The annual MMA.
Yeah, it goes Friday, ten-ish, in the morning, until Saturday night, basically, there's, there's, um, two banquet dinners and an all-day functions and stuff.
Are you going?
Oh, I always go, yeah, yeah.
I'll read it in your report.
This is the best meal of the entire weekend, and it doesn't cost the town a dime, free, um, I think Blue Cross Blue Shield pays, which is all the more reason to go.
Is it a buffet by any chance?
Oh, it's, it's a great meal.
I know my way around those.
Yeah.
Actually, I think I'd like to go if you wanted to put me on there.
Okay. Anyone else?
It's not, because of the food.
Tiki tiki, we'll get it in, and I, that's it.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm done.
Does anybody else have anything? Okay, I'd entertain a motion then.
Motion adjourned.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just gotta sign some things, folks.
I think I'd like to be put on the list for this evening. It's just my, um, keep in.
Add home page. To TM. Tell what you do. Put down, correct spelling of the name, and, um, email address here, and I'll pop you right on air tonight. Okay.
Couple, everybody's starting to paint their, their pen white, uh, I don't know the difference, um, unless they do it in competition that way, I, I really don't know. And sometimes with the orange, it's tough, if you have a dirty backboard, and that orange is on there, and you'd be amazed, sometimes it, if, during the evening, it, it gets tough to see it, so, uh, maybe that's good, maybe that's bad, I don't, I really don't know. But right now, I think, uh, we're gonna wrap this up, and I wanna thank everybody for listening. Um, my name is Neil Kaiser, uh, Steve Duon, Dwayne was gonna be here with me tonight, but, uh, he got called to throw shoes, 'cause his team didn't have enough players, and they needed him, and that's what happens, so, uh, I wanna thank you. This is the Foxborough Hot Shoe League for the year two thousand and ten, we're across from the town garage, and you, as a citizen, are welcome to use these pits also. Talk to the people in the highway department.